Welcome back, everyone. I'm Councilor Peddengill, Acting Mayor for the month of November and therefore chairing this committee as a whole. And we are running behind. So we have a hard stop at 1:50 and a really, really hard stop at 1:55, which I know cuts down our time a bit, but I will turn it over to Ms. Gunn.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Dora Gunn, Transportation Planner with the District of Squamish. Today, I'm providing an update on reducing speed limits in Squamish. Quick background, so the Motor Vehicle Act, I also refer to it as the MVA, regulates speed limits in BC. For municipalities, the default is 50 kilometers an hour. Municipalities can change speed limits through bylaws and then subsequently by posting signage. Part 13 of the MVA enables pilot projects that contest future changes to the act. They've released one pilot project so far, which was focused on electric scooters, and they do plan to release another one focused on road safety, which could include speed limits. In July 2020, staff brought a report to council outlining some options for speed limit reduction. At that time, council supported applying for an MVA pilot using a yellow line approach, option two, which means that for roads that have yellow center lines, they would stay at 50 kilometers an hour, and roads without would be 40 kilometers an hour. In 2020, we had a budget of $45,000 for that project. However, MOTI has not announced that project to date, and they have not provided a timeline for when they might announce it. So the goal for today is to decide if we want to continue to wait for that opportunity or consider another option. So we've talked before about the rationale for reducing speeds, so I'm not going to go into that in too much detail. We do know that slower is safer. However, there's a bit of a trade off between speed versus compliance and enforcement. There's no 100% clear answer for what exactly the right speed is for any given road. NACTO, which is the National Association of City Transportation Officials, it's a US organization. They produced a report in 2020 that was focused on safety and speed limits, and they provide some recommendations for different types of streets. They recommended 16 kilometers an hour for shared streets and alleys, 30 kilometers an hour for minor or local streets, 40 kilometers an hour for major streets, as well as as a default for a citywide limit or a blanket speed limit, and then 50 kilometers an hour for majors. They said it was possible to have 50 kilometers an hour on major streets as long as they had good active transportation infrastructure and low densities, so it wouldn't be good in a commercial area. So for the remainder of the presentation, I've assumed 40 kilometers an hour for the options, except neighborhood ways, which is 30 kilometers an hour. But pretty much any option could be converted to 30 kilometers an hour or some other speed. There, there we go. So a quick refresher on what's happening in a few other BC municipalities. This is not an exhaustive list, this is just a few examples. So Surrey, right now, starting in 2021, is doing a pilot project where they have three residential areas at 30 kilometers an hour and another three at 40 kilometers an hour. And they'll be looking at the crash rates as well as the perceptions of safety to decide what they're going to do moving forward after that. Sanich and a few other municipalities in the Victoria area are waiting for the Motor Vehicle Act pilot. They're also proposing to do a yellow center line project. They were originally proposing 40 kilometers an hour for their non-yellow center line roads. They've changed that to 30 kilometers an hour now, but they're still waiting for the pilot opportunity. Roseland has already reduced their streets to 30 kilometers an hour, and they did that using signage throughout. And then Whistler, just recently, in September 2021, changed their, most of their non-highway streets to 30 kilometers an hour using signage posted at the highway exits. So a really brief review of the first four options that are in the report that also came to council back in 2020. So number one was to install signage throughout town, keeping the major collectors at 50, most others at 40. This takes a lot of signage and is relatively expensive compared to some other options. Option 1A was to do just a pilot of option one, and that could be one or two neighborhoods, could be at 30 or 40, or 30 and 40 to compare those two speeds. Option two is what was recommended previously, which is the Motor Vehicle Act pilot using a yellow central line approach with the yellow central line roads being at 50, other roads at 40. Option three was another MVA pilot, but using a blanket approach, blanket 40 kilometers an hour. So most roads in town would be 40 kilometers an hour. We'd still retain the school zones and the neighborhood ways that we currently have, and that's true for all these options. And then option four was to expand the neighborhood way network. So we'd expand it significantly from what we have now. We'd keep major and minor collectors at 50 and local roads being 30. And these are kind of the overall approaches. It is possible to mix and match some of these a little bit. I haven't provided those options, but we can discuss them later on. So a little more detail on option five, which is the new option in this council report compared to last time we came to council. So this option has signage at all the entrance points into town from the highway, saying 40 kilometers an hour unless otherwise posted. That would take about 25 signs for our highway exits, plus a few more in a few other select locations like exiting school zones. We would retain the school zones and neighborhood ways. I spoke with BC Transit about these blanket 40 kilometer an hour approaches. And their estimate was that it would take an additional 1,500 to 4,000 transit service hours annually to do that. They also estimated that 1,500 service hours would cost about $150,000 annually, just to give a high level estimate. If we went down to 30 as a blanket approach, their estimate went up to 2,000 to 8,000 hours annually. So it's significant. Squamish RCMP is willing to enforce this option as well. Okay, I've tried to summarize all of the options together in one table. The options are across the top, the considerations are down the side. I've noted whether the major collectors stay at 50 or not, but that is something that, as I mentioned, we can mix and match options a little bit. So that doesn't necessarily have to be exactly how it's laid out in the table. I should also note that transit impacts and speed reduction are related to each other. So where we have lower speeds across town, so let's say a blanket 40 kilometers, that has a higher impact on the transit, so like inversely related. In general, the green means cheap or good or easy to understand, and red means bad, expensive, hard to understand. I'm not going to run through every single one of these dots, but I will just pick out a few highlights. So for option one, signage throughout, overall, pretty good, except the cost. Piloting that, overall, pretty good, except we had, still have to do something else after the pilot, so it's just a starting point. Option two, which is what was recommended previously, overall, pretty good, except we don't know when we could do it. Option three, it has the issue of, because it's a blanket, it has a higher impact on transit than some of the other options. Option four, still relatively high cost because it has a high number of signs that are required. Could be a bit harder for people to understand because there's so much changing speeds. And then I put a red for speed reduction, it would have an impact on speed reduction, so perhaps red isn't the right color, but it probably reduces speeds across town, the least of all of these options, which is why it's red. And then lastly, I included option five, the new option. Enforcability is yellow in this option because we're not entirely sure how enforceable this option will be at this point. And then again, because it's a blanket 40 kilometers an hour, it has a higher impact on transit. So given all of these options, staff is continuing to recommend option two, which is waiting for the Motor Vehicle Act pilot. It provides a great option for reducing speeds at low cost, it's easy to understand, and it still supports transit. So budget considerations, we have $45,000 this year that could be carried forward to 2022. This is sufficient for a number of different options. We could pilot signage throughout, we could continue to wait for the Motor Vehicle Act pilot for the yellow central line approach. We could wait for the other option, the blanket speed limit approach using the Motor Vehicle Act pilot, or we could go ahead with the limited signage approach. For any of the other options, or if we want to modify the options, mixing and matching a bit, more work would be required for an updated budget estimate. We'd also have to consider staff resources, particularly in public works. So if we're going to be putting up many, many signs across town, we'd have to work with them to understand what the timelines would be like for them to do that. So the staff recommendation is that the District of Squamish continues to support implementation of option two as described in the report.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to Mayor Elliott and then Counsel French.
Thanks, Ms. Gunn. If council went in a different direction, how do we reconcile a non-option two, option five, one? Or sorry, not one, the other MVA one with a blanket speed, how do we reconcile that with the annual operating agreement we've already signed with BC Transit?
Through the chair, we'd have to work with BC Transit to understand what those impacts would be. So if it was a blanket 40, we would have the choice of either amending the AOA or we could reduce trips if we wanted to implement that right away. Now, it would still take us some time to implement any of these options. We'd have to create a detailed plan before we can implement them, so there's a bit of a time lag still, even if the decision is made today.
And then those expansion hours that you mentioned in your presentation, 1,500 to 4,000, that's just on the existing service, not on the expansion that we just signed in the AOA, correct?
Through the chair, yes, that's correct.
My last question is, in option five, there was a little line saying exclude or include the major collector routes. Do you think it is a viable option to exclude them in the limited signage option?
Through the chair, I do think it would be possible to do that. So we would essentially apply a blanket 40, which we would advertise at all the highway exits, and then we would put up 50 kilometer an hour signs on couple of major collectors, primarily transit routes. And then, so the driver would see that 50 kilometer an hour, and then anytime they were going to exit from that 50 kilometer an hour, we'd have to put 40 kilometer an hour again, just to be clear. So it would require definitely more signage than what is proposed. So it would take more than 25 signs, it would take significantly more, but I think it would be possible.
Counsel French.
Thanks, Chair. I'm just wondering to help visually, could we have the red light, yellow light, green light slide back up? And my question is around option five. Cost in that slide showed up as a green light. Now, based on what I heard in the report, I think I heard that transit cost has the potential to push up into additional hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. So I don't see how the equation works there for option five to have a green light beside cost unless the transit cost isn't calculated in the green light.
Through the chair, that is an extremely good point. I did not include transit costs in this cost consideration line. This is just to implement the project without transit considerations. We don't have an exact number for transit yet, and it would apply to several options potentially.
Right, I would just add that the that red I would also add that the, thank you, red light is assuming a complete blanket 40. If there were certain high transit routes that were left at 50, then that would greatly diminish the cost of transit and/or impact to the transit effectiveness.
Thank you. So I have Counselor Herford and then Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I was struck by the wide range of potential impacts to transit, like the potential number was vastly different and might, somewhere in the middle there, might jump over the line of sanity or responsible decisions. So how, and I get that this would be, would be sort of a preliminary ask of BC Transit to assess the impacts, but is there something more that we can tease out of that range? Because it seems larger than I expected it to be at this point.
Through the chair, I could ask BC Transit to provide a more exact number. They could provide an exact number, their scheduling department would have to do that. This number was provided by their planner, so it was as an estimate. So this is something that we could go away and do and bring back to council. It just takes some time, like several months likely.
Thank you. And then my other question is around this, the timeline. I'm on, I see that red means, in my mind, that we're not in charge of wholly or maybe at all of the timeline, which is where we're at with the Motor Vehicle Act on those option two, three. Is, are there different shades of green as we look at the other options here from a timeline standpoint? Like, what does, what does a green on timeline mean, given that some of our community would like to see a speed reduction, you know, five years ago? So I'm just trying to understand what, if there's any difference from an implementation timeline on those four green dots.
Through the chair, there is no shades of green on my chart, but in reality, there probably are some shades of green. Green indicated that we could start working on it right now. We still have to develop a detailed plan for any of the options, and then some of them are going to be easier than others depending on how much signage is required. So for example, if we wanted to go with option one, that has a high need for signage, and so I don't know if we have adequate budget allocated in 2022 at this point for that project. So while we might be able to start it, we might not be able to implement the whole thing in 2022. Whereas for something smaller, like for example, option four, we could probably get a little bit further. At least we could, we could start to implement that one gradually, or the pilot project, we could do the whole pilot project this coming year.
And the pilot project, if we like that principle, does require changes in the MVA. This isn't something that we could just do, we need this pilot project piece, is that, is that correct?
I apologize because I think I was confusing. So there's the MVA pilot projects, there's also, we could do our own pilot project, which is option 1A, so piloting in a few neighborhoods, so we don't need any changes for 1A, we do for two or three.
Okay, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. In rereading the report to council, my question is probably partly already been answered, and this is, and it concerns pilot project evaluation. I see that the, that the proposed budget of $45,000 in the 2021 budget includes monitoring. So a pilot project evaluation, I may ask then, does the Ministry of Transportation Infrastructure expect a specific monitoring program or evaluation? And has some thought been given to potential criteria or tactics for monitoring such as soliciting feedback through a survey, something of that nature? I've lived in a variety of neighborhoods that have had traffic calming initiatives, and there's been a lot of process around them. Has thought been given to the design of evaluation for this project?
Through the chair, so we don't yet know exactly what the wording of the Motor Vehicle Act pilot project will be. I would imagine they will probably ask for monitoring, and so we have given it some thought. We only have one traffic counter right now, so we decided we need at least one more, possibly two. So that would be one aspect of the monitoring. I know Surrey is also taking a survey approach, which I think would be a good idea also, because it's not only about the actual speed that cars are driving at, but it's about the perception of speed and the perception of safety as well. So we'd want to try and measure that through a survey.
I have a question of my own. You mentioned we could mix and match some of these, and I know we've talked about some engineering solutions, for example, some targeted solutions like tabletops in Garibaldi Highlands. We've also talked briefly about possibly redesignating, designating some streets from collector to neighborhood roads and so on. From a staff perspective, is what's proposed here mutually exclusive, like it precludes doing those other things? Or we could be considering all of those, it's really just a matter of budget?
Yes, so we definitely could consider multiple different things. So for example, we could do a blanket speed reduction, we could also work on engineering changes to our roads. We could also look at changing the classification of roads using specified criteria to do that.
Counselor Herford.
Thank you. Since we first discussed this, the yellow line pilot, it has a green for cost. As I've been moving around the community, I've been looking for yellow lines, which, you know, I hadn't looked at in that context before. And it strikes me that there's roads potentially that have yellow lines that shouldn't in this context, perhaps, perhaps vice versa. And I wonder if that was included in your costing, or if this was purely a signage-driven costing, just so I understand that piece.
Through the chair, yes, we did consider that, and I'm aware of a few as well that would likely have to be reevaluated. And there would, there is some budget in there for changing a few lines around. If it was extensive, we may have to defer that to a following year.
Counsel Reese.
Thank you. And when we talk about cost, is there, or does staff have a view on implementing this by stages? For example, a subdivision a year for five years or something like that to get most of, most of it done, but spread it over it, and so it's maybe partly pilot project and partly staging costs? Would that kind of thing work? If we took option one, for example, and said we wanted to have it 40K around the district, except for posted collector roads, but we're only going to start off in Valley Cliff, for example, is that workable, do you think, when Valley Cliff is 40 and the rest of the district for that stage is at 50, the same 50?
Through the chair, I have thought about that. I do think it's workable for some options more than others, so for option one, I think that's absolutely workable, also for option four. I think for something where we're trying out a yellow line approach, I think there's so much communication needed for an option like that, that we would have to just do the whole thing at once.
Okay, council, does anyone want to take a stab at an option or an alternative?
Oh, Counsel Herford.
Thank you. Option five is appealing to me, and I am curious about looking at the naming of your options here. You know, a 5A has sort of been batted around where the some additional signage and and, you know, a higher speed limit on certain collector roads that would lessen that, that transit impact out. I'm just curious if we have, if we could get some idea of the cost related to, to that, because the transit impact is the biggest variable there, which comes out to me in a, in a costing, a costing standpoint. So, yeah, have you, have you thought about that and where that fits with existing budgets and future budgets?
Through the chair, I have thought about that. The option five is a relatively new addition to this conversation, and so I don't have a number for you today. We could go away and provide an update to council on what that would look like, something 5A with, you know, supporting transit, but otherwise generally 40.
I'll go to Mayor Elliott.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around some of these options. So if we did five, but we left major collectors at 50, so when you pull off the highway on Mamquam Road, that's a collector road. So there'd be a big 40 sign, then there'd be a 50 sign. So isn't that confusing? How would we get around that, not put the 50 sign till later down the road? Or, yeah, how, from a technical sign placement point of view, how do you manage that?
Through the chair, I think we would have to be very limited in what major collectors we chose to make 50 in order to go with option five, using limited signage. I think perhaps we'd have to focus on the government road corridor or parts of the government road corridor. Because you're right, it would be very confusing to drivers to have blanket 40, but then, oh, here, it's 50 right away. I think that would be extremely challenging.
But then when I look at the government road corridor, some of our biggest complaints come from Rockendale, because kids are using government road to get up to the school. And so I'm imagining that I would get interesting feedback if we excluded that portion of government road from the blanket 40.
Through the chair, I agree that that northern part of government probably wouldn't be appropriate. So it'd be a point somewhere, maybe, I don't want to guess. There'd be a point up there somewhere where you'd probably reduce it back down to 40 again. And then by Mamquam School, there's school zone, so that helps there. So there's probably a few spots where it would work and a few spots where it wouldn't. But even if we had 50 on parts of the transit network, it's going to help us reduce the transit costs. We could develop a proposal and provide an update to council.
I'd like to move the staff recommendations to stay with option two.
Counsel French seconds, Mayor Elliott, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, I like to lead on a lot of things, but I'm not sure that we're totally ready to, to lead right now on a blanket. So one, Whistler just started in September with limited signage, so we're not totally sure of the enforceability of that if someone contests a ticket. So I'm very curious to learn from their experience. Two, we're having difficulty just enforcing our 30 zones. We get certainly complaints about, about that and speed generally. So I'm concerned about creating the expectation of more enforcement if, if we do a blanket at this time. And three, I'd like to see if the province comes through in 2022 with their MVA pilot projects and give us the time to bring back a fully costed option for the 2023 budget that, that narrows. So if we don't get our MVA pilot in 2022, we'll know that pretty early on in the year, then we can start thinking about a more detailed study from transit. This is a huge range in which to make a decision on, 1,500 to 4,000, or 2,000 to 8,000. That's a lot of tax dollars at a time when we're also really pushing hard on the regional transit system. So that makes me incredibly nervous about what the overall budget looks like for transit. So absolutely, we need to reduce speeds. I'm not sure doing a blanket at this time without understanding the full costs and implications and not creating confusion is the right thing to do for me. So I'm happy to hold, but use 2022 as a real planning year to, we need to do something, we know the data is telling us, you know, different studies from the US are telling us you should drop your speeds to at least 40. So we know we have to do it, but I don't think we've, we've got it totally worked out in a way that I feel comfortable with right now. Thanks.
Counsel French.
Thanks, Chair. And speaking in favor of the motion, while I'm not a big fan of waiting, I'd rather that we do something. In this case, I think that waiting is the thing to do, and in the meantime, we could encourage our residents to be aware that change is coming and lower speed limits are on the way informally. I could see how option five would work quite well in Whistler just because of the way the resort municipality is laid out and the way its neighborhoods are structured. I think we're a little more complex in Squamish and makes me hesitate on option five. And the budget uncertainty around this is also making me very nervous. Like, we're talking about a really large set of numbers for the transit impacts, and I would like to better understand what the budget implications would be around transit before we dive headfirst into an option that could potentially be really expensive. Thanks, Chair.
Counsel Herford.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this motion. I am more inclined to move towards something that we are more in charge of the timeline, but then that, I do see that that will potentially burden us with an unknown amount of transit impact, thus budget impact. I would like to understand that more, and Thus budget impact. I would like to understand that more and I expect next time that we have this in front of us, either we get a green light on the MBA option two and we're off to the races with, hopefully that comes with some support and some help from the province to accomplish that. But there is a time where we will need to take charge of the timeline. And so I'd like to be ready to do that. So I, I hope in the background, we can flush out some of the, some of the, more fully, some of the impacts of the other options if we do need to pivot. So we're ready to do so. So this doesn't turn into another year of waiting, because I think our, our community is expecting some action from us. And there are actions underway. I recognize that with the engineering solutions that are, are being put forward. And I'm looking forward to seeing those come online in sort of the, the hotspots. But I do think that there's more work to do here and I would really like to take control of the timeline. But I share the transit, the concerns around the, the transit and budget impact. So I'll be supporting, sort of holding out for the province, I guess, at, at this point, but it's start, starting to become impatient with waiting. So I'm, I'd like to see something move forward, but I think it's the right thing to do for now.
Counsel Reese.
Thank you. I'm not going to support this resolution. I, I'm having a lot of difficulty with the yellow line concept and partly because I just maybe perhaps can't visualize it. What happens at night? What happens if there's dirt in the road? What happens if there's other things like a little bit of snow or something that could reduce the visibility? So you wouldn't necessarily know there was a yellow line or not, or think there was. So I, I just am not in favor of that. Plus, we have to kind of, I think, a fair amount of signage into getting people up to, up to speed, no pun intended, on that particular option. So I am more aligned with number one, or actually number one A, because I think we can phase it in and do a pilot project and pick a neighborhood and pay attention to the collector roads, which in the staff report are described as roads that have great active transportation systems. And it's difficult to say we could call many of our active transportation systems great on some of these roads. I mean, there are some, but that are there, but I wouldn't call them great necessarily. They're not separated, et cetera. So, so I think we could work on that part of it as well as we phase it in for these collector roads. And that would have at least a minimal or lesser impact on transit, which I think is a significant consideration. And also allow us to phase in the cost of this with transit over a couple of years as we bring a subdivision online, for example, so we could anticipate that. So not in favor of just sitting, waiting for the province or anybody to kind of come along. I would rather get started on, on probably it's one A, I think, and leave it to staff to recommend which area. I'm not going to be prescriptive about that.
Thank you. For myself, I am going to support this. In my mind, as I understand, the, the enforcement cost is not included in the cost line. And from everything I've read and understand, that would be a significant piece of making any of these successful. And, and so to me, that speaks to the importance of street design. And also to a degree, the designation of streets. And so those are two things that I would want us to work on in any case. I think we can work on in any case. And I would like to see that in the coming year's budget. I know we've got a direction and we're, we're planning some things for Garibaldi Highlands based on feedback and lots of discussion we've had. But I would like to see that work progress and we can see where the province lands. Hopefully, we can combine streetscape improvements and so on in a future year with the, the yellow line pilot or some variation thereof. And I would assume we will continue to have discussions and review these options to some degree, notwithstanding a specific decision today. At least that's how I'm thinking about things. So I am comfortable going ahead on the premise that we're, we're hoping for number two at this point. And that, you know, again, in the coming year, I would like to see what we plan to do in terms of street design and street designation or where we can go with those. Any more comments? Not seeing any. I will call a question. Anyone opposed? Counsel Reese opposes and motion carries. Thank you. Let's come back at 102, 102. Oh, 202, sorry. I am going to turn things over to Ms. Dicker for Community Foundation Annual Grants Update.
Good afternoon, counsel, and thank you for your time today. My name is Sarah Dicker. I'm the Acting Manager of Arts and Culture here from the, here at the district. As part of my portfolio, I look after the grant agreements with the Community Foundation and the Arts Council. And I'm joined today by Karen Clark, who's the Executive Director from the Squamish Community Foundation. And she's here today to present an update as part of their agreement on the annual grants. This is the first year that the grants have been, sorry, this is the first year that the grants have been done externally from the district. So we had a lot of learnings and collaboratively. I think it has been a great success. I'm going to hand over to Karen now.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Mary and counsel. As Sarah said, my name is Karen Clark and I'm the Executive Director of the Squamish Community Foundation. We run the grants on behalf of the district. And I'm going to give an overview of the community enhancement grant process that we ran in the winter, early spring of 2021. We'll go over the process, the grant recipients, and a few insights that we had. So just a little bit about the Squamish Community Foundation. We were established in 2004 to create a legacy of giving in our community. We received donations from individuals, organizations, and corporate donors. In turn, we provide funding that, from these invested donations to local nonprofit organizations and individuals through annual granting programs, including the Neighborhood Small Grants Program. So the official community plan is a big part of the community enhancement grants. It is one of the criteria, the five goals are one of the criteria that we evaluate the applications on. And the five goals of the official community plan that we look at are that programs make Squamish more livable, healthy, resilient, connected, and engaged. It's not troubling seeing where I am here. So the grant application dispersal process was carried out as planned. We signed an agreement with the district in November 2020. And then we organized and promoted and recruited for our grant dispersal committee in December 2020 and January 2021. And we managed to have a call for applications by February 1st. The application deadlines closed March 1st. And then we reviewed, the grant dispersal committee reviewed from March 2nd to March 6th. We handed in our summary report to the District of Squamish on March 10th and received approval by mid-March. And by late March, we had the checks dispersed and the grant programming began. And many of the programs are still running until December 31st, 2021. So we had a great partnership with the Squamish Arts Council. We're very thankful for their mentorship and support through the process. And there was a lot of collaboration and learning going on for the, for the Squamish Community Foundation. So we promoted the community grants through our Facebook page and on the website, where you could also find our application and application guide. We advertised the grants in two newspaper ads and a chief online ad in collaboration with the Squamish Arts Council. We also held an informational town hall where District of Squamish Council and staff and Amy and myself attended. And at least 20 community members were in attendance, which was a great turnout for that event. So we received 23 applications. Two applications were submitted from outside the community. We received four from Cedar Sky Community Services and two from House Sound Secondary School, all for different programs. Applications received were for the following populations and/or areas of interest. So there were nine for children and youth, seven for all ages, five for marginalized and vulnerable populations, three for environmental programming, two for sports, two for seniors programming, two for diverse and LGBTQ plus programming, two for women, mothers, and babies, and one for faith-based programming. And a lot of the applications covered more than one of those areas. That's why that adds up to more than 23 applications. But the total amount of funds requested was over $200,000. So just a little bit about our criteria and scoring. The, one of the main criteria that they had to meet was that the applications had to meet at least one type of programming. So that was the type of programming included decolonization, reconciliation, intergenerational programming, neighborhood connectivity, environmental stewardship, equity and diversity, health, youth-led initiatives, Squamish's vulnerable populations, and recreation programming. And you can see from the slide before that a number of those types of programming, programmings were met through the applications, but there were definitely a few gaps. So we were working on those gaps this time around in the current round. And we are meeting some of those gaps. We've got some different types of programming in this round. And then there were nine other criteria and some of them included clarity of project goals, activities, and timelines, the degree to which community groups form partnerships, and the degree to which projects promoted healthy, caring, safe, and supportive communities, and the degree to which the project fostered community involvement. Each of the criteria in the last round was worth three points each. Oh, is that backwards? Yep. And there you can see the overall ranking from highest to lowest and the amounts that they received. So in total, we funded 21 of the 23 applications and a total of $86,572 was dispersed. So I won't read each one out, but that's, that's the general ranking there. And I'll just talk a little bit about a few of the projects. So the first one was, was a big favorite. It was the Quest University Pollinator Garden, which can be found on Fourth and Pemberton over there. It's, it's quite, quite an amazing project and it was started in April 2020 to help endangered pollinators and to educate the community. And we gave them funding for just building boxes. Actually, it wasn't, wasn't a lot of funding, but they just wanted to wood for their boxes. And they actually partnered with the Squamish Men's Shed, which was a lovely partnership for that program. So, so they, that's really coming along. It's a, it's a really nice corner over there. Our next project was the Inclusive Culture Club. They're a new group and they partnered with Squamish Pride for their Books for Change program. So that's a program where all of the schools in the area will receive 15 to 20 diverse and inclusive books. And the picture here is one of the processes at Don Ross, where the students are giving feedback and contributing to the kind of books that they would like to see in their library that are inclusive. So that was that one. And they're, they're still very much in the process of, of their grant. And here we have the Mamquam River Access Society. And they were given money for their Mamquam River cleanup. They did, had one big cleanup on September 25th, where they had 12 volunteers and that's just some of the stuff they pulled out. So there was a car, couches, mattresses, an oven, a microwave, and many tires. So they took about a ton of waste to the landfill and then another load of scrap to the ASM. And doing a lot of good work and they do plan another cleanup soon. And then I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the programs that are still being worked on. And sometimes funding doesn't quite go, or programs don't quite go the way that we thought they would. And it's our job as funders to support groups to help them meet their goals anyway. So this is the Squamish Environmental Conservation Society and they received money to repair interpretive panels up on the Eagle Viewing Dyke. And when they went to go in, they got a quote for the panels and then they realized that the plexiglass was glued to the panels and there were many heavy bolts holding it all down. So this is a picture of Carl Halverson cutting off one of the bolts, but apparently you can't see the smoke coming out of his ears. They're always doing that. So, so yeah, he's at there, they're having a bit of a hard time, but they are, they're determined to get done by the, by December 31st. And then the Squamish Senior Centers Society applied for money for senior social events. And they were not able to hold those at the Activity 55 Center or at all because of COVID-19. So their funds were repurposed for their really successful Tai Chi and art classes that they've been running since then. So that was a couple of reshifting of funds there. And then we have the Youth Engagement Pilot Project, which was a partnership between the Squamish Community Food Hub and the Cedar Sky Community Services Youth Counselor. And they focused on youth who would benefit from food security information. And so they held a six-session learning workshop that went through July and August. And they learned how to garden. They went on a foraging hike. They cooked together using rescued food. They learned budgeting skills and ate family-style dinners together. And apparently it was a real success and they plan on holding another one soon. And then finally, the Better at Home Luncheon Learns for Seniors. They were given some money to support their, their workshops such as Elder Abuse Awareness Day, gardening on your balcony, and the Squamish Men's Shed presentation. So they were a big hit and they supplied lunch during those learning sessions as well. And the Cedar Sky Hospice Society received money for their informational video series. And they've done two so far, which is a virtual tour and their testimonials, and they have one more video planned. So there are a number of learnings and recommendations from the first round. Some of the, some of these have already been resolved or we're working on. So the questions in the application and related criteria will be altered to ensure more clarity, simplicity, and accessibility. So we did alter the questions in this round of grants and will continue to do so with feedback from applicants and from our review committee and, and the district. So that's an ongoing process. And then the application guide should more clearly state that only applications from Squamish organizations will be accepted. So we did that and we didn't receive any applications this round from outside of Squamish. So I guess it worked. And reports will continue to be simple and accessible but gather more data. So in this round, there was just one question and it's, it's, makes it easy for, for grantees to write the reports. But in the next round, I want to keep it easy, but also gather a little bit more data from, from groups. Working with the, we're going to work with the District of Squamish on organizations submitting more than one application each time that comes up. And the same with receiving, organizations receiving permissive tax exemptions as well as community enhancement grants. So that's an ongoing discussion with staff and, and myself. And then the Grant Dispersal Committee would like clear direction from the District of Squamish on whether these funds support religious or political activities or programming. So there is currently a policy being developed on that by the district. And finally, it would be great if the present, this presentation could be given in the spring, because then we would have more full information. The groups would have completed their projects and it would be a time where we're not currently running these, these, the next round of projects. And finally, the Squamish Community Foundation would like to thank the District of Squamish for the opportunity to administer, administer these grants for our community. And we would also like to thank you for offering the support to the community year after year. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Counsel. Counsel Anderson.
Thank you. You discussed in your report, Ms. Clark, the, that the application and guide should more clearly state that only applications from Squamish organizations will be accepted. And I'm wondering about the definition of Squamish, because I am aware that a group from Ring Creek contacted the foundation and received a welcome. Please submit was the response. But perhaps there's some gray area there. What about applications from Ring Creek and Upper Squamish, say, within area? What about applications from Ring Creek and Upper Squamish, say, within Area D? Could you comment further on this?
Through the chair. Thank you, Councilor Anderson. I think the Ring Creek application was for a neighborhood small grant application quite a while back, but your question is excellent. And so far, I think most of the nonprofits exist within Squamish proper. There's no nonprofit or charity that exists in Ring Creek or the valley or even Britannia. As far as I know, actually there, I think there's one in the valley, but. So most of the nonprofits and charities exist, exist in Squamish proper, so it hasn't been an issue. Yeah.
A second question. I'm wondering, I'm aware of not both nonprofits and companies, local companies, who, who award, who give awards annually or make donations to different causes and projects in the amount of several thousand dollars. Is there capacity within the current administration of the Squamish Community Foundation to take on further clients, donor clients, companies that may wish to join with your program and alleviate themselves of that administering a granting program? I can think of a nonprofit that has an annual program that might be a good fit. But do you have capacity to take on such donor clients? Squamish terminals, I'm aware, is already a part of the program of the foundation, but is there capacity for others?
For the most part, yes, we never say no to money. But I think it would depend on what was required and how much work was involved. Because I am the only staff person, we have a small marketing position. But it would be a complete discussion. We would never say no upfront. We're always open to discussion and keen to support these flow-through funds and whatnot as best as possible. But I, I will point out that we're in a situation where we can only donate to charities. So there'd have to be, you know, some sort of arrangement made through that. Yeah.
Finally, if I may, Chair, and it may be just an observation, but I see that there's been a grant to $3,000 to the Squamish Historical Society. And this is for a website project, welcome initiative on their part. But I wondered whether there's some gray area between the mandate of the Squamish Arts Council and the Squamish Foundation in that category of heritage. Because I might have imagined that, that as an application, it might have also been made to Squamish Arts Council. Is there a little bit of a gray area there? And I'll just leave that as an observation. Thank you.
Sorry, I was thinking there's wanting a response, but I, I see that was just a comment. Councilor Herford.
Thank you. I really enjoyed the report and I learned some, what some of the, I'd seen some projects throughout town that I was like, I wonder where, what that is or where that came from. And the pollinators particularly close to my house, and I watched that happen. And I was wondering what it was as it went, as it sort of took shape. So I, I see the, the reporting and like the presentation we had today as an important part. So as a community, we can celebrate the achievements of the, of the, of the program, but also providing some accountability to the, to the groups that have applied and that they're fault, that they're following through. So in your report at the end there, you, you mentioned changing the reporting to, like, when we would receive this report. And I'm just curious how you would see balancing that. I mean, I, I think anytime's a good time to celebrate the achievements of our community. But then there's that sort of accountability side that is also, also important. And one of the things from the onset of this in, in my mind was, was, that was awkward, was aligning those things so that we knew that if a group had, you know, met or exceeded our expectations and they came forward with another application, we'd like to know that they met and exceeded rather than, than be able to apply again, even if they haven't achieved that reporting and funding timeline. Does that make sense? And, and with that in mind, what, what is, are the thoughts right now as far as changing that? And closing the loop on, on those two pieces?
Through the chair. Thank you, Councilor Herford. So it was only a change in the reporting. So this report, this presentation that I'm doing right now, the reporting would stay the same. And the recommendation is based on the fact that the projects aren't finished yet. So I actually can't give a full report of the project. So it'd purely be a shift in this presentation, moving to the spring when we have all the reports in. And the report, all of the rest of the reporting that we do and whatnot would remain the same.
Right. And that would be prior to the funding of the new, the new, prior to the intake of the new, of the new applications? Or is this a, that's the piece that I just wanted to understand?
That would be after the intake. So right now, we are currently doing, we're evaluating the applications for the next round right now. So in all actual, actuality, we're in the same position because some of the groups haven't finished anyways. Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Okay. And thank you for that. And were any of the projects scaled back? I know that in our, in, in my time dealing with these, sometimes we'd have an application that came in for 20,000, but we liked it, but could only get, it made sense at a lower, at a lower budget. So I saw that some were sort of just yes, no is what I saw on the, on the screen. But was that an aspect that came into play at all in this process?
Through the chair. Thank you, Councilor Herford. Absolutely. So there was 200,000 applied for and we were only able to disperse 86,000. So definitely there was a scaling back this, in this round of applications. One of the questions in the application was, are you able to run your grant with less funding? So that helps us make our decisions based on that. So definitely projects are scaled back, but most of them are running as, as planned, except the ones I talked about. Yeah.
Thank you. That's good for me now.
Council French.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. It was definitely enlightening. And I'm curious to know, are you happy with the advertising promotion process that you went through? And then further context to that, do you plan to make any changes to that strategy next time around?
Through the chair. Thank you, your, thank you, Councilor French. It went fairly well. We, as we partnered with the Squamish Arts Council, who had been through the promotion process before, it was great. And working with the Squamish chief worked well. I feel that we just have to continue to get the word out there. So in this round, we did much the same. We partnered with the Squamish Arts Council again and did the, the newspaper ads as well as the online ads. And it seems to be working. We, we do a lot of outreach on our own as well to particular individuals and groups, just to make sure everybody's heard about the application. So, so overall, it's, it's, we relook at the process every time, but it was, it was mostly the same this time. And also the town hall really helps too, the informational town hall.
Well, that's great. And you answered my, my next question, which was about direct communication with organizations you thought should apply. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a, a question or a, well, it's a three-part, so we'll see how well we do here. I, I saw a presentation last week, I think it was from, I believe, the CEO of the Vancouver Community Foundation. And he was speaking to how they were looking at where they are invested and then how they are prioritizing and, and doing intakes and assigning grants and with a focus on climate action, but also inclusiveness and equity and so on. And, and so that leads me to, I guess, the three-part question here. One, I'm just wondering where the Squamish Community Foundation is in that sort of space. Then part two of that, we have some criteria that we have asked the, the foundation to think about. And I'm wondering if there's an alignment between our sort of specific requirements and more generally where the community foundation is at with their granting. And then the third part, oh, I'll leave it there for now because I forgot the third part.
Thank you, Councilor Herford. I forgot the third part. So thanks for stopping there. So in regards to inclusion, diversity, reconciliation and climate change, I sent a special email out to all previously funded groups and applications and really put the word out there that we would love applications focused on those issues. And we have, have received more applications focused on those issues. And I've noticed in their answers, they're trying to address those issues as well. We, as an organization, are particularly focused on those issues. So a lot of what we're talking about to the community, whether it be around our own grants or just sharing information and knowledge, we really focus on those issues. And what was, sorry, I'm, I'm not remembering the second part of that question.
Just sort of wondering, you know, sort of the, I guess, the alignment between what we're asking for and what we've seen in the criteria that, that we've sort of directed versus where more broadly in community foundation giving the expectations are. And just trying to understand that alignment or if there are gaps there.
So fortunately, that alignment comes in fairly well because what the district is asking for generally involves those, those issues. And so we were able to bring just perhaps a little bit of different wording, but I'm, I feel that in alignment with the OCP goals as well as these issues and some of the other ones mentioned, mentioned in the types of programming. That was an amalgamation of what the district was previously asking for, what's in the OCP, and also what we're looking for as a, as a broader organization and what the issue, the big issues are for us right now.
Okay, thank you. And just for clarity, I'm Councilor Peddingle. I don't want to harm Councilor Herford's reputation. So to make that, that clear, I, I deserve responsibility for my.
My apologies.
Yeah, no worries. And I did remember the, the third part. And, and just if you can clarify, because the community foundation does provide community support outside of the, these grants, are you combining when applications come in and supplementing funding from your, your other donors and so on? Or is this really kept quite separate from the community foundation's other community support?
Thank you, Councilor Peddingle. Yes, they're kept very separate. This is a grant process unto its own, but we certainly share learnings from all of our grant processes.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands from council, so thank you. Oh, Councilor Anderson.
Chair, I wondered whether our presenters wanted some feedback specifically on a couple of the questions on, under learning and recommendations, whether that was something that our guests would like feedback on today or whether that may be more appropriate for next presentation or reporting. They include, for example, on, on clear direction from district on whether organizations receiving permissive tax exemptions are eligible for community enhancement grants or a couple of other items as well.
Ms. Dicker, were you looking for that feedback today?
Thank you, Councilor Anderson, through the chair. And we, as staff, are looking at the community foundations' requests. And through the policy, the community grant policy, organizations are limited from applying for grants through this program if they are already receiving support from the district. Through the permissive tax exemption policy, organizations are able to apply for grants through this program. So there's a little bit of a conflict there. I know that staff, finance staff are coming forward with an amendment to the permissive tax exemption policy. So I think that might be the right time to address that issue. However, at the moment, we can broadly interpret that organizations can, are eligible for grants that have received permissive tax exemptions at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And it sounds like that's sufficient for now. So thank you very much for some really fantastic projects and glad to see how this has progressed. And that's our first year, wasn't it? Yeah, so it's exciting and great work so far. So thank you. And I guess, Ms. Dicker, I'll allow you to do the, the switch and introduce our next guest. Yep, Ms. Dicker, please, please proceed. Looks like we're ready to go.
Good afternoon, Council. Again, my name is Sarah Dicker. I'm the Acting Manager of Arts and Culture. And I'm here today joined by Catherine Kunsay from the Squamish Arts Council, who will be presenting on the agreements between the district and the arts council, which include the community partnership agreement, the community grants agreement, and also the, the public art agreement that we have with the Squamish Arts Council. So for those at home, those viewing at home, this is the first year that the Squamish Arts Council has ran a community grants program officially, externally to the district, on behalf of the district. And it's also the first year that our public art program has moved externally too. So I'm excited for Kat to share the details on those two, as well as the ongoing partnership agreement that has been in place with the district. I believe this is, we're going into, I think, the sixth year, but, but you're one of the new agreements. So over to you, Kat.
Great. Thank you. Hello, Mayor and Council. As Sarah said, I'm Kat Kunsay. I'm here for the Squamish Arts Council. Our mission is to raise awareness of, improve, improve access to arts and culture in Squamish while supporting local artists. And I'm looking forward to showing you through this presentation how we accomplish this through the lens of the three agreements that we hold with the district. So the first agreement that I'd like to go through and the heftier piece of the presentation is the partnership agreement that we hold with the district. This starts with youth programs, which I'll go over Amped in the Park, art, after-school art, which was a pilot program this year, the public art summer camp and youth mentorship and summer jobs. And then our public programs, which include Wind Festival, Art Walk, Community Galleries, and a new program this year called Diving in: The Art of Cleaning Lakes and Oceans. So starting with youth, we have Amped in the Park. So this was our first, well, COVID, of course, happened last year. And then this year was our triumphant return to hosting this at the Downtown Park. We hosted it over six nights with over 18 performances, 1,000 audience members and around 120 volunteer hours. We were pretty proud to keep this program going despite BCAC, BC Art Council's not offering the youth programming this year, youth programming grant that we normally fund this through. So we were able to keep this program going through our dedication to youth, looking for alternative funding options. Something else, if any of you were down at the park on Thursdays this summer, which was really great, was the Squamish Circus Collective was hosting completely separate from us, but circus jams every Thursday. And so the park was slammed and just totally vibrant. And you really felt like art and culture in Squamish was a big, big thing. Also this school, or who, also this year, we offered a pilot program. We were able to find additional funding for this program through the Don Ross Middle School PAC and the Rotary. So this served 50 separate students with over 2,000, over 2,000, nearly 3,000 hours of art-making, included 18 weeks of classes, 108 volunteer hours to art teachers, to helper teachers, and 54 class hours. This originally was a partnership with the Cedar Sky Community Services. However, we were not able to partner as well this year because of COVID, they weren't allowed to come into the schools. So we're looking forward to continuing this program next year with additional help from Cedar Sky Community Services, Cedar Sky Community Services on the kind of the child minding portion of the arts programming. And this program really came from the district's youth strategy because the idea was that we brought the programming to youth in their school with, to help with accessibility. Because the idea was that we brought the programming to youth in their school with, to help with accessibility, both transportation and affordability. Next up, we have youth mentorship. So we had three separate youth program, youth students this year employed through a variety of different funding that we sourced outside of the district. So we had around 2,000 separate hours of work from students, around $35,000 towards this effort. And so it really helped to enhance the connection to the local student population and then strengthening outreach in the community. So these positions included an events and festivals coordinator, a festival and events marketing coordinator, a youth programs coordinator. And it, there wasn't a great place to put this, and it is quite separate. But we were able to hire an arts administrator this year, which is incredibly exciting because our capacity to accomplish more is growing. So we have an amazing arts administrator who helps with everything. She primarily covers our social media. She helped set up our CRM, which is like customer relationship management system, where you kind of manage the database of people that we interact with. We're so excited to see the capacity of SAC growing through this new position. Next up would be public programming, starting with Wynn Festival for the arts. So I just have a big stat sheet here. We were able to raise, again, outside of the district, 100,000, over $100,000 that was then infused into our local economy. We were able to raise in-kind donations of 92,000. So our total kind of revenue and expense for Wynn Festival, when you include in-kind, was over $200,000. We hire artists, we hire production people, and we keep everything as much as possible in Squamish. And so the arts is not only important for the arts, but also for the economic impact that we're bringing to the community over the summer. We had around 85 total artists, artisans and heritage performers, 20 local partners like our Squamish and and like Norman Rudy's and a couple other places around Squamish, 26 volunteers and 439 volunteer hours total, which could include things from starting the planning and the board involvement in the planning down to the volunteers onsite. For engagement, we had 47 separate live performers and then three separate musical events. And what was so cool about this year is that we had performances at the Brackendale Art Gallery. We had a big festival at the Oceanfront and a separate event at Norman Rudy's. And so it kind of hits the neighborhood connectivity that I'll talk about in a little bit as well. In those performances, we had around 2,000 participants, we think. We had 12 separate workshops over four days. 25% of the offerings were indigenous with over 226 participants. And something that was great about the workshops this year was our access to the 55 center. So it's kind of our first opportunity to use that for arts programming. And we look forward to continuing to offer programming there and creating like utilizing this space and having a presence in a district facility. Additional art opportunities include 10 artists for random acts of art, which included like busking and sticker making and different poetry, all happening to enliven the streets of Squamish. And then I'll talk about this in a second, but there were 10 artists for a bus stop benches project that we initiated this year. So one pilot program, 10 benches, 10 artists and one community partner. So as part of Wynn Festival this year, we partnered with our Squamish, who is a placemaking society. And they built the benches. We connected with artists, provided the funding to initiate this pilot program, which we will continue into future years where our Squamish will take on more the bulk of the programming of this, but will still handle the artist liaising and finding artists to contribute to this program. So in serving the community, kind of a wrap up of things that don't fit quite so well into other buckets on Wynn Festival. We were really, COVID offered us a really unique opportunity, starting in 2020, where Wynn Festival used to be something where it was in the park, it was three days, and the majority of Wynn Festival happened downtown. Now, post-COVID, we're looking at it in a pretty different way and are able to spread that programming more across Squamish. So that includes the bus stop benches, the different performances I was talking about earlier, still activating the park quite heavily through the summers with amped in the park, random acts of art, including mural painting, pop-up poetry, henhead button making. And then in, this got included here, but we have 30 local businesses across Squamish and 88 artists participating in Art Walk this year, which is happening right now. And then something else where we started in 2020 and are hoping to continue is providing fundraisers that we, we help to raise money and then either give that to local artists. Or last year, we partnered with Helping Hands. So this year, through the Norman Rudy's performance, we were able to raise and directly support an artist with $2,200. And through what we pay artists, we're putting around $45,000, which in context is the whole community partnership directly to artists and performers. So Art Walk, as I mentioned, is happening now. It started November 1st and is continuing until November 28th. We have over 30 venues extending through the SLRD with the majority of them in Squamish. We had five studio tours that were online on our social media and then after our share to the artist's social media. And then 88 artists, which is our largest art walk yet, which includes painters, ceramicists, jewelry makers, sculptors, weavers, photographers and more. In addition, and still in the partnership, SAC maintains community galleries. So this program is run completely by volunteers who have deep connections to the artistic community and includes artisan gallery and gallery at the Adventure Center, the Medical Building and at Black Tusk Realities for local artists' work to be shown across town. And the final program, and a really exciting one, is this Diving In: The Art of Cleaning Lakes and Oceans. So this is a joint program with seven arts councils. So there's the Cedar Sky Alliance, which includes Whistler and Lions Bay. But in addition, we're partnered with West and North Van. They've done nine different bodies of water clean. So basically divers go into the lakes, go down and pull out, you can see at the top left, all the cans that were pulled out from one of the dives. They've pulled out shopping carts, oars, a different collection of cans. So there were 1362 pounds of trash removed in Lonsdale Quay alone, and that's just one of the nine bodies of water, including Cat Lake and Brom Lake. And then the, how this relates to art is when, when all of that is pulled out, we'll like take 100 of the cans or 100 of the golf balls and then give those to an artist and they'll make art with it. And so it's kind of trash to art. And then those are like artworks will then do a traveling exhibition between the seven different communities. And so you're all invited and have received an invitation to the material handoff to the artists on December 11th at the Check and Miss Center. Moving on to the next agreement being public art, you can see here the new community art, community mural, which was a installation, which I will talk about in a second. So the, the public art summer camp is also part of the public art program, which again, in a lot of what we do in the arts council's programming, youth is one of our strategies. And so even in public art, we're pulling it into youth. It happened over 12, sorry, there were 12 youth over four days, 20 hours and two separate artists employed to do this. And the way that it ran was the, the students were given different themes and subjects matter. And then they would sketch out how they would like to see art put onto this structure. And then from that, the artist kind of pulled together a digital rendition. And then they all learned how to kind of project onto the structure, draw on the lines, and then they all painted it together. So it was very hands-on art camp as part of public art. Really exciting. One of the public art programs from this year is already complete. So this was a partnership between Erin Nelson Moody and Paintilio. So Erin created the design, which was then approved by the Squamish elders before going up onto the back of the pavilion. And then it's kind of a paint by numbers. And so we had hundreds of people come out on September 27th to paint. You can see everyone just kind of jumps in. It's art for everyone. Anyone can participate. We had so many people come in one day that we had scheduled it as a two-day painting and it was finished on day one, which is amazing. And we were just really excited to see the community step forward and be interested in helping to paint this with us. We have two more projects as part of the public art funding that are not complete yet. We've been looking for locations. They're coming soon. And so I'll present on those next year. Moving on to the Community Arts and Culture Enhancement Grant, we had 40,250 for our projects and 12 separate projects awarded. I won't read through all of these, but we, you have them in your notes. Instead, I will give you impact examples of two of the projects that we were, that we already have results from. Because similar to Karen's presentation, some of the projects are not yet finished. And this year, we moved our funding cycle from a spring into doing it now, more of a fall/winter. And so this year, the, the timing, we already took applications in March and we just took applications again. Next year, we'll take applications again in November. And so the funding cycles will be more aligned and we will have more of the results before we are giving new, new applications. So through portage, 18 different adults were served and 10 youth. This was 50% indigenous run as it was a partnership between Lenny and like a local artist that works a lot in wood and Art Harry. They were awarded nearly $6,000. And something that's really important to us and part of what we've received from the district is as a desire is to use the funding that's given to us to then raise additional funding and to make it go further than just the simple, the 40,000 that we award. So part of our matrix is the ability to raise additional funding outside of simply the grants. So they were able to raise almost an additional $2,000 in cash. And then like in sponsorships, an additional 10,000 raised in kind. For instance, Lager Sports provided the space in which to have these nine meetings for free. And then there was an additional $2,000 raised in participant fees. There was a participant fee for this program, but if you wrote in and said, I would like a subsidy, they would reduce the price so that it was accessible to all. And the participant fees go directly to, it will be halved to be half to a local Squamish nonprofit and then half to the Squamish Nation. So in total, the, the project was around $20,000, but only 30% of that came directly from our funding and from the district's Community Enhancement Grant. Another project I'd like to highlight is the Squamish Mural Walk put on by the Downtown Squamish BIA. So this included seven different artists and murals in this year's rendition, over 250 volunteer hours. It was a pilot project. And so it was really important as funding to kind of get that project off the ground so that they can start to raise additional funding, which you'll see in a second. 29% of the artists were indigenous. So two of the seven artists were indigenous artists. They were awarded $7,500 from the Culture Enhancement Grant, raised $40,000 in cash sponsorships, an additional $2,000 raised in kind for nearly a $50,000 budget, of which 15% was the Arts and Culture Grant. So we were really excited to see how far they were able to take that seed funding and then grow it to then funding, you know, paying artists directly and bringing that into our community. There's a couple more of the grants, or sorry, a couple more of the projects. If you are downtown, you've probably seen a bunch of these floating about. So what's next for us in 2022? We plan to continue establishing program while strategically expanding programs and services to meet current needs. In 2021, we received funding from the BC Arts Councils to do a new strategic plan and brand renewal. And so part of what we also did, which is outside of the district partnership, but important for you to know, is we started strategic planning, which we will release to the community in January. And this went along with community consultation. So we did unattended sounding boards in places like Brennan Park and Under One Roof. We did attended pop-up cafes at Ampt in the Park and the Farmers Market in effort to talk to people face to face. And additionally, we did a community questionnaire that we pushed out through our social media channels. And so in addition to the all of the consultation that has been done by the district and through the Arts and Culture strategy, thank you. So you're putting all of that together to create our new strategic plan, which we will have a community group meeting at the 55 Center on January 24th, which you are all invited to. In addition to this, we'll have a brand renewal. And I think one of the really exciting parts of the brand renewal is right now, we have the Squamish Arts Culture, Squamish Arts Council overall brand, but all of our sub-brands, Art Walk and Wynn Festival and Ant, they don't have a distinct look that in any way relates to our overall branding. And so this will be an umbrella brand, as well as making sure it ties into our individual programs so that everything is clearly identified as Squamish Arts Council. In addition to that, we're looking to strengthen our organizational systems, current programs and capacity. And one of the things we'd like to do there is looking at our arts administrator and increasing her hours, because right now she is only 24 hours a week. So looking at building our capacity through additional internal measures.
Great, thank you. Some fantastic work and nice, nice pictures make you feel good when it's been a lot of rain. Council, any questions? Councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Kunsay, you've noted the strategic plan that you've recently been engaged in, that will be unveiled in the near future, and that that was funded through the BC Arts Council. The Arts Cultural Heritage Strategy has a number of action items that each of them involve assigning roles and responsibilities to the cultural sector itself. I'll just quote from one example, Arts Cultural Heritage Sector work with local stakeholders in the community to discern needs. And then there's a variety of needs identified here. And then there's a variety of needs identified here. My question is, since this may involve meeting locales, facilitation costs, how might these convening and facilitating communications costs be met in as much as they're directly related to implementing this district strategy? Would you include them, or would it be, could it be proposed that they may include it in a partnership agreement? For example, the annual partnership agreement? Would you have any suggestion about how those, and assuming that the Arts Council is an organization that will be involved in taking on that responsibility? Any idea about where this fits in, in your funding, these kinds of tasks?
So as part of the funding through the BC Arts Councils, that was some of the funding that we used was towards convening people and meeting and having those conversations. Additionally, with the resource of the Fifty-Five Center available to the Squamish Arts Council, we are planning to use that as part, like, as part of the facility cost. Would be that we're very lucky to have access to that facility. I would prefer to keep that out of the partnership agreement report for now, I, I think, as far as that goes. But I think that the BC Arts Council funding will help to cover some of those costs.
Anything else, Counsel? Oh, Counsel French.
Thanks, Chair. And thanks for the, the report and the update. I was really impressed by the leveraging that is taking place. That's really exciting. And as exciting as it is, it had me wondering, is there room to grow that? Like, is, is there more potential for even more leveraging?
Definitely. Yeah, I think it's a big part of everything that we do. We actively start looking for sponsorship for our own programs well ahead of when they occur. I think at some point, there will be a capacity reached where we've kind of tapped out all of the funders that are looking to fund arts and culture in Squamish. But that's where something like the Diving In Project is really exciting, because it, since it is now hitting environmental, we were able to get a thirty thousand dollar sponsorship from Returnit. And so we were able to leverage in kind of a new arena that we haven't been able to in the past. So I think creatively, we can find different ways to continue leveraging funding.
Great. And this is a, a positive spin-off that I didn't really anticipate out of this change. So I think that's part of why I'm, I'm so excited by the leveraging. And then I'm, I'm also interested to dig a little bit into participation involvement with seniors. The, the presentation talked a lot about youth, whi- which is great, love it. And, and I think I heard a little bit of involvement with seniors. Do, do you see that there could be room for growing seniors' involvement in, in the programs and the funding?
I think that's definitely something that will come into our future programming. Our old, old strategic plan had youth as a priority. Our old strategic plan did not have seniors as a priority. So looking into our new strategic plan, I don't think that it is specifically going to hit, like, different groups, but diversity in general will be part of our new strategic mandates. And especially being at the Fifty-Five Center and having a presence there, I think that that will naturally roll into our future programming.
Counselor Hertford.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. I enjoyed seeing some of these projects throughout, throughout town. And I, for the first year ever, I've attended Ampton the Park for, I think, maybe fifty percent of the shows I, I caught, and it was, it was great. And I agree that, and it's the first time I'd heard of what that group was, the other group, the Squamish Circus Collective. It is impressive, and it was, I agree, the, it really made the, uh, the park feel so, so alive with, between the music and the, uh, and the other, the, the shenanigans that the circus folks got up to. So I really, I really enjoyed that, and I stumbled across the, um, Portage program, um, through some of the work I do with, with Lager Sports, and it was really, uh, cool to see, um, that project too. So, yeah, thank you so much for the work. And the seed, the sort of seed funding slash leveraging, as, as Counsel French said, is, is, I'm, I'm glad you highlighted that, and it's a great victory. And I'm glad that, that, um, I think this highlights why, or sort of reinforces the decision to have this funding done this way. And the creative folks that, uh, that you are at the Arts Council come up with some great creative ways to, to leverage those funds. And I think it's a great return on investment. So thank you so much for that. And I'm really excited to see the, um, the branding and the new strategic plan as that comes forward. And I, I absolutely see what you, what you're saying between your, your different projects and sort of aligning that with, uh, with, with the, um, even aesthetically, but so that everyone can sort of better highlight the work, the good work that you're doing. So I don't really have a question loaded up in all that, but just thank you so much for the presentation and all the work this year. I think it's been great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll, I'll just add for myself, having been involved at the Arts Council Board before, being on council, uh, and still having the privilege of, of being involved in Ampton the Park a, a little bit. It's just incredible to see year after year. I, I recall the discussions always been that the artists are here. It's just about bringing people together and showing what's, what is here. And I mean, that's happening so much and so much more every year. And it's, it's just so exciting and, and just the murals and the music and the activation. And the, you know, building new grants off of, of, you know, grants upon grants. It's just all around fantastic and really exciting. So thank you very much. And with that, I guess I will thank Ms. Dicker and invite, uh, Mr. Bragg to the table. Welcome back, everyone. Nice little break, and I will turn it over to Mr. Bragg, I believe, for, um, an update on the real estate and facilities master plan and general works.
Good afternoon, Erin Council. Uh, my name is Cal Bragg. I'm the Director of Facilities Planning and Construction. The objective today is to provide a quarterly update of the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan projects and other works, um, coming into quarter three, which is up to September twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-one. These works include the Valley Cliff Fire Hall, the public works, uh, which includes the office, maintenance, and also the yard works there, the Tanalis Fire Hall, also the temporary fire hall, the covered structures, the three covered structures, Brennan Park Recreation Center works that we've got on at the moment. Also a bit of an overview of the sustainability, uh, baselines and tracking where we're at, um, and also an overview of the, the grants that we've got in play and had in play. So with Valley Cliff Fire Hall, it's under construction right now. The builder and the project team, uh, the designers, the consultants, everyone's doing a great job coming through COVID. The budget was sixteen point seven. We're on budget at the moment through this quarter. We anticipate to stay on budget. There has been a lot of chops and changes, um, because of COVID and, and general resourcing, but they're, they're pretty much on track. They're on track with the timeline as well. We're anticipating a handover date of around May twenty-two, and that falls in line with our three shovel-ready projects for next year. The overview of works we've got, we just had the, it's called a topping-out barbecue. That's where the, uh, the roof gets put on, so to speak, and it's weatherproof. We've got heat inside there, the exterior installations, uh, they're working on, the interior roughing's going on, the drywall started as well. You can really get a, a feel of the shape of the building, and the utility connections are on at the moment as well. So the next steps on this job, uh, for the next quarter is continue the drywall, get to at least past eighty percent roughing, and we work up the, um, the core there. Um, and then also working on the handover process, and that's the fittings, the equipment, the, uh, the, the chitels. For the public's works, uh, sorry, the public works project, um, as noted, that's the office, uh, it's the maintenance base and also the yard as well. And we're budgeting around twenty-one million dollars, um, and this is in works at the moment. So, um, the process for budgeting goes from class D, class C, class B, class A. Around class B, maybe B and a half to A, we, we're pretty confident we know what the construction costs will be, and we can literally sign on the dotted line with the participants moving forward. We had our internal contingencies, and we'd be very confident at that point of knowing what the costs are on the project. I'm not anticipating to get to that point until that April next year. The timeline starting is just after that, in Q twenty-two next year. Um, and that's on time as well. The, the project team are doing pretty well. The works that we've got at the moment, we've just gone through a value engineer. And what the value engineer does is it looks at the project to try and work out where we can reduce costs and get some feasibility throughout the process. And we start this early, and we're going to go through another one or two of these processes. We also looked at the comparable, um, public workshops in BC, so we can work out the size of the jo- the yard that we've got now. How does that compare to the number of personnel and other, um, uh, BC public workshops? We've increased the size a little bit. The RFP noted that it was up to twenty-eight thousand square foot. We're finding about thirty-one, thirty and a half thousand square feet is what we require. This is still a work in process. We've had some soil contamination hurdles, I'd probably best call them. We've worked through them, and the soil contamination is not as bad as we thought. It's anticipated when you have a public works and you have salt yards and everything there. We're moving the salt sheds, or we're working on the process to move the salt sheds at the moment, and also work through flood design. So before the recent floods here in BC, we designed this to a when a flood's going to happen, not an if, uh, if flood is going to happen. So we approached the, uh, design team after the floods and said, listen, we're going to change anything based on what we know from what's happened in the rest of BC, and the answer is no. What we've done is we've elevated the, um, office side. We're keeping the maintenance bays at flood control level. The reason we're doing that is, uh, we can create them with materials that can be basically create business as usual as quick as we can after floods come through. We can open up the bays and literally let the water and debris flow through there. But the office side is different. We're elevating that, um, all the mechanical, all the electrical, the, uh, the generators, everything is above flood level on the office side. The next quarter and the next steps, uh, we need to confirm the sustainability levels. Public Works building is difficult, um, on the carbon side and the energy side, just purely because of the maintenance, sorry, the, um, the, the way that ma- the maintenance bays are utilized with the doors being open constantly. We're working through to a class C budget. We can, we're engaging the consultants. We're also working with the wastewater treatment plant right now to see where the synergies with the new circular is going on next door there. On the Tanalis Fire Hall, the budget's ten million. It's in works at the moment. It's tracking where it should be. The timeline, um, through the RFP or following the RFP timeline there, it's, uh, it's happening immediately after Valley Cliff Fire Hall. We're on time for that. The works at the moment, we're going through validation phase, and we've changed our contracting with our participants slightly different from what we normally do on other projects, which is called construction management. This one's called IPD, which is Integrated Project Delivery, where we basically get everyone involved sooner. We spend more money, but we also get to know the cost of the building a lot sooner. And it just gives us certainty, and we're pushing for that right now. We're also working through the upper-level design for affordability, and that will be for either affordability or any other commercial that we want to stick up there. It's basically lounge for the room up there, we previously discussed. And also working for the temporary fire hall location and flood design in this one as well. The flood din- the flood design and mitigation in this one is relatively straightforward. The next quarter and the next steps is getting all the consultants and the trades engaged, continuing the validation phase, push-through schematic design. So we'll come forward to council with another update with more detailed design and where we're at next time. And that'll be coming into probably January, February for the next update here. And then we're working through the, the temporary fire hall, uh, pre-development works as well. And also there's a grant option out here that we're chasing pretty hard at the moment.
One second, Mr. Bragg. Yeah, just on that one, uh, so I think I might have missed what you said. The red portion there is part of the ten million, but the second floor, is there anything planned for the second floor? I know we were building the ground for it to allow a second floor, but are you actually constructing the yellow? Is that part of the immediate?
Through the chair, uh, no, we're not constructing it. We're designing to allow for it for the future build. The covered structures, we built three covered structures this year. It was Dentville Park, Cleveland Avenue, and Stan Clark Park. We started a little later than we wanted to, but they'll complete it on time and on budget. The next steps in this process is coming into January here is working out what our options are for the twenty-twenty-two program, and that's the locations, the size, and the type and the style that we're going to build out. The Brennan Park Recreation Center works, um, there's three items. It's in works at the moment. One is the master plan, uh, the other one's a third-party energy audit, and the other one is a GICB, GICB grant that's in place, and I'll expand on that in the grant slide in a moment. The timeline for these is the master plans in works. Staff are coming back to council December fourteen to update. The energy audit's complete, uh, the grant notification is due now, which is, um, exciting. We're anticipating an, an update any moment now. So the next quarter, the next stages here is presenting the master plan and then getting the information out of the, the energy audit and working on what we're going to do for the long-term planning. Because we've noted before that the Brennan Park Recreation Center is the, literally the most energy-use facility of what we've got under our, um, under our program. So just a heads up on a, oh, not heads up, a, an overview on sustainability. I'm a focus here on Valley Cliff Fire Hall, a Tanalis Fire Hall and the public works. And these are the ones that are either in construction, which is the Valley Cliff Fire Hall, which is noted in a slightly dark gray at the top there. I just want to give an overview of where we're sitting. It's really tracking. You can see we're in greens here. Our baseline was NECB for the, for the Valley Cliff, which is the National Energy Code of, uh, of Canada. And we're tracking beyond that, which is great. You can also see on the landfill at this quarter at ninety-seven percent, um, of, of saving items coming to the landfill. It's going to change slightly for the, for the last quarter here, but we're tracking really well. The only reason body carbon is slightly orange is we, we have got structural lumber there, which is great. But we've also got some cinder blocks there, and for us, um, you know, it, every project we do, and we better than the last one. We're trying to focus on the next ones that we can reduce the amount of carbon, um, materials in the build there. We reduced potable water by forty percent. That's off baseline BC code. Um, and we're tracking here the design, as I noted. We've got some pretty lofty goals for the public works building and the Tanalis Fire Hall. One of the grants that we're looking at for the Tanalis Fire Hall, um, it requires it to be passive. So where we're at, I mean, step code four is passive, step code three, um, is what we're aiming for, but a twenty percent better than step code three is just an overview. So we're pushing for some high sustainability levels. And finally, on, on grant funding, uh, an overview. The GICB grant, which is a green inclusive community buildings grant, it's in at the moment. We're awaiting notification, as I've noted. Just a quick overview, it's sixteen three, sixteen point three million dollars with the works, at which four point five will be funded by the, uh, the district. And these works involve a new administration building there, um, adding an elevator, a lobby refit, the ice rink change rooms refit, um, the ice rink re- insulation of the roof, the refit and the mezzanine fit out includes programming in that space, and also, um, updating the HVAC to reduce the, uh, the outgoing on the energy side. If successful, this one's an immediate start, and we'll be looking, starting the actual planning in January next year. Um, and then the other two, which presented prior to council, um, were not successful. And that was the Wellness Park, the Wellness Center. And then also the Healthy Communities, and that was for the covered structures for, for twenty-twenty-two. We weren't successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bragg. I have Counsel Reese.
Thank you. That, that's, I think, the second time we've been turned down for the Wellness Center. And I'm wondering, um, do we have any sense of why that is, why we're, we're not successful with that particular grant?
Through the chair. Sorry, that's, uh, my communication to councils for. We've been returned down once. I was just updating this particular quarter, and it happened in that quarter. So that was the Wellness Center grant that was turned down, I think it was two months ago, because this was coming into September twenty-three for the update.
No, actually, we were turned down a couple of years ago. Right when the, when we were doing, it was actually probably even last term, perhaps, uh, when we, phase one, uh, there's phase one, two, three, four, and that, and that plan to revitalize Brennan Park. And phase one is the one you say we're just waiting to hear from. That aspect, Wellness Center was phase two, and three was the Rankin, four was the new pool. And, and, and we actually applied for two because we thought that was the one we needed right away for programming and got turned down. And then we reapplied after COVID came, because the government seemed to be shoveling money out the door. And that's the one we just heard of again. So I just, we had a little bit of feedback the last time. And basically, it was too big for the particular program we asked for. It was fifty million dollars available, and we were asking for about nine of it across Canada. So I was just curious if we had any feedback or whether we somehow have to repackage that or reframe it or something for, to get that project done.
Through the chair. Yes, you're correct. That was actually before my time, that other application. You're correct, Counsel Reese. Yes, we've had feedback, and this one's slightly different. We've actually had pretty good feedback because I've come back with questions, um, and that's a positive thing. They don't give any further information on that, so we await their, um, their notification.
Okay, Counsel Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Bragg. Before I forget, I wanted to compliment your inclusion of the glossary in this report. I think it's a very useful, uh, I think it's a very useful set of information items there, also for the general public interested in the dialogue on our building plans. I wanted to ask about, under the municipal hall, current works, I'll quote here, space plan complete. I wonder if you might elaborate on what you mean here by space plan being complete. Of course, our conversation is evolving and will for some time regarding municipal hall. Are you looking, are you referring to a functional space uses, programming? Could you elaborate on what you mean by space plan complete?
Through the chair, yes. What we did there was we got information from all the directors and staff. Within the municipality and, oh, within the district, sorry, and compiled sizes. So it was an initial sizing requirement to back up what we originally had in the real estate facilities master plan. We wanted to basically touch base coming out of COVID. Because I think every architect and interior designer now is really working out, you know, a twenty year strategy on the size of building. The size of buildings and what's required for offices. So and what we did is we reinvestigated, we did a touch base on that and we're pretty confident. I think it was twenty eight to thirty thousand square feet is what we need here moving forward for the municipal hall.
Thank you. There will of course be further space programming conversations as we go along with this building concept, I imagine. Referring to the Tannellus Fire Hall, I appreciate the reference to. Or other usage because we haven't as a council settled on what might be a scenario in the upper floor. We have a dance academy working out of an industrial space in the business park and we have a theater company working out of a hotel conference room on a temporary basis. We have a lot of, just as another scenario, alternate scenario to affordable housing. We have other types of uses that we might consider. And my question is, do we need at this time to consider elements of building infrastructure, presumably not, not structural system? But are there elements of building infrastructure that we need to consider at this time, just to make sure that we're leaving room for options and scenarios and adaptability on the upper floor?
Through the chair councillor Anderson, that's a good question. The answer is yes. Mechanical is probably the main item at the top of the list there. We need to allow for that on the side of the building. And to allow the future expansion. And we've also working out the separation between the two businesses or the two usages of the building. Whereas one we've got the fire hall and the other one will be either affordable housing or commercial or whatever we deem on the, on the upper levels there. So the answer is yes. And the reason we're pushing this as a high priority now with the design team is the earlier we get on top of this, the better we can create a better design.
Then we might revisit this scenario discussion in the next report that you suggested maybe January, February.
Through the chair, correct.
Finally, and this may be more of a comment, and this is in reference to the Public Works Yard. It seems to me that we have a lot of room here and a scenario, and again, this is just an observation, maybe we should be considering putting more offices here. Maybe bylaw, engineering, building, I don't know. But maybe it makes sense to consider alternate locations for district staff offices than downtown. After all that conversation about a new municipal hall and community hub, it is still early and preliminary. But I wonder whether there's any considerations at this time for adding more office space or floors for office space or considerations for the site plan at Public Works. This is an observation or a ballpark scenario.
Thank you councillor Anderson. I can sort of pitch this one a little bit is. We aren't, we don't have a lot of space at that site. Once you factor in the necessary space for vehicle storage and vehicle movements. We're at three stories already and we're significantly over the height that's already there. So I don't think we have a lot of free board or wiggle room to be adding a lot of anything else on that site. You've got all the vehicle storage, the expansion to the wastewater treatment plant, there simply is not a lot of space at that site to be jamming a lot of anything more on. The only option will be to go up, but say we are high already, so it's not going to be that easy to keep going up and we can't go out.
Thank you, Mr. Braxton. That's helpful.
Mayor Elliott.
Thanks. I guess one question I have coming out of this past week is that the Integrated Flood Management Plan says that we should. Move critical facilities of the flood plain when we get the chance. So I think my question is opposite to councillor Anderson's. Did we think about not putting. Offices there? Or moving some of our vehicles? Or do we, are we just taking a. Emergency management approach to not losing our public works facility in case of a flood?
Oh, I'll take first crack at this through the mayor, through the chair. We don't have a lot of options in terms of real estate resources to move a facility of that size. So, no, we haven't done a lot of, well, we did in the real estate facilities master plan. So there aren't a lot of good options to move it. What we are doing is. Ensuring that if we can't move it quickly, it's above the flood plain and that goes for both the facility, the new facility and additions to the wastewater treatment plant. Mechanical and electrical and anything that we can get above the flood plain. We will do. There's a certain limit to that logic because the rest of it's below the flood plain and elevating points that. Well, if the parallel component is going to be flooded, sometimes it just doesn't make a lot of sense to elevate everything above. But where we can, that stuff's getting put above the flood plain. With respect to the new facility, it's, anything that's damageable is above, significantly above the potential flood waters. Trying to flood protect that site in total would, we just can't afford it. If we wanted to bulk fill that site, we'd probably spend the budget that we've got bulk filling the site and we'd have no building. So we're protecting as best we can on the site that we have, given that we don't have anywhere else really to move that. Move that facility. The vehicles we can move off at relatively short order. The building itself will, will be. Usable very shortly after the, after a flood event. I don't know if that answers them.
Just mother nature keeps giving us things to think about. Designing our next generation of buildings. So with that in mind, we keep getting drawings of public works, but when the. First fire hall came to us, it came with architects and drawings and concepts and here are the assumptions we've built into this and. When are we getting that so that we make sure there's alignment between. What council thinks should be going here and existing here and what staff are working on?
Through the chair. We just completed the value engineering process and now we're pretty confident of moving forward with where we're at. We're about ninety percent through schematic, so we can come back in probably end of January, early February with further details and basically answering that a hundred percent.
I had the same question as councillor Race, like what are we learning from the Wellness Centre being rejected? And should we rethink the concept a little bit or do we need to include a different sort of element to get it off the ground? So that doesn't need to be answered today, but it's, yeah, just trying to figure out how we combine the feedback we've been given and, and set it up for success in the future. With regard to the covered structures. Are they, the concept was that they could be moved. Are they movable aside from the concrete pad?
Through the chair, they are movable, yes. With slight difficulty, we can literally unbolt them, crane them on a truck and then move them. And then they need to replace somewhere else that has a concrete pad as well. With these structures, the concrete pad is the one that has all the engineering and a ton of cost on there. But the top portion, what we can see, the actual wood portion is definitely movable, yes.
And then. We can see that these are being used. The third one is, it's getting built in Denfield. But are you going to bring back some different concepts for twenty twenty two? I had in my mind perhaps that we build some smaller ones. So one of the things that these covered structures don't have is seating with back support or armrests. So it makes it difficult for some folks to both sit down and get back up again. And also creates a lot of shared space, whereas I think some of. How I see people gathering and sitting in our community is more about me and a couple of friends, but I don't necessarily want to be around. All of a bunch of people and Whistler put in some little A frames. I'm not sure if that's the solution, but. Yeah, how do we, how do we go from those three grand, you can hold a party there kind of structures to. Something that meets maybe some other needs in the community.
Through the chair. You know, we talked for these ones initially, it was the kickoff, knowing that we're going to all the, the, the community needs covered space from the weather. You know, we talked to three district planners, our Squamish, Househam Performing Arts Association for these first ones. We're going to dive in further into the community and see what we really need here on that. And you know, that's kind of stage one with these and stage two, you know, the worlds are always so we can do what we need for these ones moving forward and definitely adapt what we've got to the, the feedback that we receive.
And on the existing ones, I know some of them, the open side faces north, you know, they're all facing sort of different directions. Are we monitoring that for how the weather gets in or shade or? We've had an experience with tilted roofs on bus stops before where we've gotten into a bit of trouble. So I'm just wanting to make sure if we're going to build these more, are we, are we making sure they're doing their job in all types of weather?
Through the chair, yes. I mean, the prevailing winds and the views and the location definitely comes into that. So when we locate these and the angle of the roof and the heights and everything comes into individual locations that they're at, yes.
Just for myself, piggybacking a little bit on the mayor's question about thinking about where we build something like public works, given some of the recent news. And I understand with, you know, Abbotsford, it apparently that was a lake and so you can assume if there's a flood, it may not be as transient. I think here while we anticipate possibly some flooding, we expect it would be transient and so maybe it's a bit of a different picture, but. Have there been any conversations with the province yet? And maybe it's just too early, but, but hey. As a community, as we're thinking about investments, is there any change in direction? Are any of those conversations coming in terms of what the province would prefer? Knowing that it's going to have to step in if there is an emergency possibly.
Through the chair. No, we haven't had those conversations. Other than in the real estate, real estate facilities master plan, that's where we looked at all the, all the land that we have and the options. That we have for locating our facilities that, you know, they're limited, very limited. If we want to move major facilities, we need new land. It's hard to come by, so.
Yes, thanks. And I can appreciate that. And I'm just wondering if that's where the province may have an interest because. You know, at some point the province might have to become involved if there is a, an emergency and so I'm just wondering if, if their perspective has changed in the, in the past few weeks. But it may just be too early for them to have put thought to that.
Yeah, it's too early to get any, they're still busy fixing the broken stuff to have given us any communication about what we should be doing in the future. I mean, we're in constant contact with, with them over, over standards and over changing data. So we try and stay on top of that stuff.
Hey councillor Horford. Thank you. I had questions around the Public Works project and what the council decision points and when that would be, but that's been addressed. So a little bit, we'll see that early in the new year. Around the covered structures, I'll, I'll start with the sort of looking forward to other, other options and I just echo what some of my other, my fellow councillors have, have, have said. I think we've seen. I'd like to make sure that we're sheltering from the wind. I'd like to just make sure that we're, we're doing varying sizes. I was at Granville Island and they had these really cool ones that just seem to cover like a picnic table, but. The roof and the sides, so you can actually sit there on a terrible day and have lunch with some, with some friends. So I think that there's room for. For varying sizes and varying solutions for this sort of. End goal of, of increasing the year round use of our, of our spaces. That said, I'm curious about the. I suppose it's the, I don't know if it's procurement bidding or just ensuring that we're getting fair, fair value on the projects in general. Now, this sort of comes from some of the, the stuff that's out in the, in the community around, it seemed to be triggered with these. These structures, but can you speak to how we sort of, how that part's handled and how we, we can be sure that we're getting. Fair value as we do some of these projects throughout the, the ones that are, and not just the covered structures, but I, I spare its. Fair process for the sort of the scope of the things that you're, that you're, you're working on and we've discussed today. I know it's a very broad question, but a broad answer is fine.
A simple answer and Cal can give you the details of how that process went down, but we follow the procurement policy. So this work is competitively bid. In almost all circumstances, if it's above twenty five thousand. It's going out to at least three different options and I'm forgetting the next step up, but if. If it's about, yeah, seventy five thousand, it's going out to an R F P, so it's getting competitively bid. So Cal can speak to the, the details of what happened with those particular.
Yeah, through the chair, it was definitely competitively bid. We didn't get too many applicants for these ones. We had a couple from other provinces as well. I think the two main proponents were local. And the process that we went through literally was through the bids and tenders process and everything was above board here. So we chose the one that was the most competitively priced and the one that could actually do the job and we had the confidence that can do the job and the time and the, and, and the, and the money that was allocated.
Thank you. That's, that's fair. Could you? I think my last question on this, on this topic was you just mentioned sort of the engineering of the slabs and what was there and it seems very, the mayor asked earlier about the movability. And obviously we're not moving those concrete slabs and I was just curious about. What, yeah, what's, what's hiding in there? Why, why do we need to have such a. A solid, you know, obviously immovable, but, but what's there? And I understand that created, can create a lot of expense. I know that sidewalks, for instance, are similar and cost a lot of money to put in, you know, just a few feet of sidewalk. So I'm, I'm just curious what's, what's involved there and what was the rationale behind that?
Through the chair, yeah. Gone are the days where we can throw some square footings in and put some posts on and call it a day with, with posts and beams here. You know, downtown Squamish is liquefaction of the soil is an issue. So we need geotech engineers in to tell us what's required there. We also need structural engineers to sign off on that. At the end of the day, these are public buildings and they can't fall over and they do design to a factor of safety. And so over the past ten to fifteen years, that factor of safety has increased. And the cost of, you know, rebar, the amount of concrete, the M P A, all that sort of stuff is different than it was from yesteryear, so to speak. So we're obliged to build within what qualified engineering professionals are designed to. And, you know, we see this on not just the covered structures, we're seeing this on other buildings as well, where the level and the factor of safety is significant. And that's the way the building industry has been heading and, you know, they're covering their. Their work and that's what we're seeing across the board here.
Sorry, I forgot I'm chairing. I'm just. It, it, just following up on that and listening to the discussion, am I correct in, in thinking in terms of accessibility? That would also drive us to need to follow the similar sort of design. Like if, if we didn't have a base such as this accessibility for a lot of people might become problematic. Is that a reasonable assumption or might there be other ways to provide that sort of level of accessibility? And I'm thinking, you know, if someone's in a wheelchair, that sort of thing.
Through the chair, I think one of the fundamental items that we did for design before we took the first step for the works here was to make sure this was accessible to everyone. It was, it was a, you know, a have to and a deal stopper if we couldn't do that. So yeah, accessibility is key.
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any more hands. So thank you very much for the, the update and the information. Did you have a question councillor Race?
Yeah. So just. So I'm clear then on something like the Wellness Centre, staff intend to come back to us with some thoughts or options or something when we get more information about that.
Through the chair. Sorry, can you clarify that question?
The Wellness Centre, the budget, the grant request that was turned down at Brennan Park. And I'm just wondering where we're going from now with that. Is there an intent to, after we figure out whether it should be repackaged or phased or something? And apply for another grant? Are we going to have another discussion about that? And apply for another grant? Are we going to have another discussion about that, about some of the options around funding that?
Through the chair, yes. With the grants, there's an art to them. There's also a bit of a chicken and egg thing here is that we, we're obligated to follow what grants come to us. We can't, we're, we're, we're very well aware of what grants are out there at the moment. And they need to fit within the right jigsaw piece, so to speak. If that wellness grant comes back again, we'll be jumping on it. If we find another grant, which is like the GICB one, which is similar, we'll be jumping on that as well. Again, if it fits within the fundamentals and council approves. So does that answer your question?
Well, I guess, but when I asked the question, do we know why our grant didn't make it? Do we get any kind of feedback? My recollection was that's coming. That's still something that's, we haven't got yet. As a council, we haven't got it at least. And so I'm just wondering if that is going to come back to us, if we're going to look at options. And, I mean, is it too big a project for most grants? Do we have to cut the building in half and do it in two stages? Or is there some other way we can package this thing to, you know, avoid the third strike, if you like, just to, to see if that can go forward in some other fashion? And I say that because I remember all the discussions last term, that, that building is substantially for programming. And programming, at least when we did the study, was identified as the most pressing need in recreation. You know, above and beyond the skating rink and the pool and so forth. And so from me personally, it remains sort of a high priority to try and get that building off the ground. And so I'm just wondering what our next step might be with that particular project.
Through the chair, that grant program is complete. So we're moving on to and chasing the next grant program. So as far as the feedback, that we didn't receive any valid feedback that would help us for the next ones. We do know internally that every grant that gets turned down, we do an internal workshop to work out how we can do it better next time. So yeah, we didn't get the feedback that we'd want. We requested, but we didn't get it.
Councillor Herford?
Thank you. Back to the, the covered structures and next, and next steps are the, will that come to council sort of the next plan, the next round of like of the 20, I guess it'd be 2022 work, work plan for the covered structures before moves forward?
Through the chair, yes. We'll be seeking approval on design, location, cost and the whole program and what we're proposing for the year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, I think now we're, everyone's through. So thank you very much. And with that, I will entertain a motion to terminate. Councillor, councillor Herford? And councillor, councillor French second. Any discussion? No? Anyone opposed? No, we are done. Thank you. And I'll see everyone at 5:30 online or back here.